You're over here now.
Susie.
I know.
Okay. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. I want to call the meeting to order. First thing I will consider are changes to the agenda. You have a very abbreviated agenda in front of you. We have a very short list of things to accomplish this evening. I don't think we need to keep people too much longer than they've already committed to us tonight. So, any changes to board members' request to the agenda? I will offer one observation. It happens to be one of our members' birthdays today. So, happy birthday, Matt. Thank you for sharing your birthday with us. Twenty-nine.
Forty-one, going on twenty-one, feeling like eighty-one on Sundays after mowing the lawn. Yeah. Happiest of happiest, thanks. I'm older than Star Wars, the word's out of the box.
Hey!
That was for you, Justin.
Brings us to statements from the audience. I have a list of eight names and I have time available for seven. So, the last name on this list, that person will not be heard this evening.
Madam Chair, may I amend that we extend for the eight speakers?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Okay. You've gotten a reprieve, Kathleen Lloyd. I'm calling first on Jeffrey Baroldale, followed by Wilgan.
Is this?
Is it Brown? Thank you.
Philosophy is the top enrolled social science field. We have a higher enrollment than any other social science within 2011, 2016, and we're still up there at the top. Our FTE rate dropped lower than any other social science field. It's only when you average it with religion that we look bad. And even then, we don't look that bad. So, there's no justification for cutting philosophy classes, which have a demonstrated high demand, high fill rate, one-hundred-and-fourteen percent five years ago, and a mere ninety-five percent in 2016. It's absurd. So, if you want to restrict some of the religion courses, cut sections, that should be done at a department level. Also, there's, I'm a very talented person, and there's lots of work here at the college that I'm qualified to do. And so, if the college decides to get rid of the philosophy and religion position with no justification, there's other work I'm qualified to do, but I think not as well-qualified. And they're going to lose, you're going to lose Caroline, you're going to lose all our wonderful part-time faculty, and I'll be doing work at the college that I'm less qualified to do, but still minimally qualified to do. And so, that's another reason you'll get no benefit, you'll lose some great part-time faculty. I think you will lose students. And finally, I'd like to close that the idea that you would save one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars is, I think, a fallacious accounting. If you backfill part-time, they said they're going to cut philosophy and religion and add other sections. If you assume like the same fill rate in philosophy, that number's probably going to be a little lower. The most you could save after litigation costs from the grievance, you'd be lucky to clear forty or fifty thousand dollars. Out of a two-hundred-and-eighteen-million-dollar budget, that makes no sense. I'd like to call on the board to make philosophy-religion align item veto, but they vote up or down on independent of the general vote of the budget. And I think it would make sense to do that with these other controversial budget items offered by the administration, who has not participated in the governance process in any significant form, particularly at the Budget Subcommittee Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Wilgan? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Wilgan S. Brown. My pronouns are there and there's, and he is. I'm coming today to speak to you as the future president of student government and as a representative of as a representative of students across campus. I want to express the pain in my heart that arises from the decisions that have been and could be made by the body today. For one, I've only known Dr. L. for about three weeks now, but I must say that the work she has provided to students in helping us make our voices heard is amazing. The amount of cultural competency that she alone brings to this campus is something that we should all aspire to. I am second, as I think of the impact to students. Faces I have come to respect will be leaving this campus if their programs are cut. Faces I had hoped to work with to fix the problems here on campus. I would like it to be known that I blame no single person for any of these decisions. However, I do blame entire bodies. Yes, the information is out there. Yes, it's online. Yes, students can access it. But it's not accessible. Students, your regular student is not going to know what those numbers mean. Your regular student is not going to know that these decisions have to be made. So, to say that information being out there is all that students need to know what's happening is very foolish. However, on the same hand, I do want to look out to the rest, to my peers in the student body, and I want to ask you why? Why did you not get involved until it was time for us to step up to the gallows? Why did you not pay attention, Mo, to what was going on within student government, within the governance councils, within all of that? Why did you not pay attention, Mo? Why did you not listen, Mo? This year, we had record-low photo turnout in student voting elections, and that is deplorable. That doesn't just speak to the lack of woke from the current student government. It doesn't just speak to the lack of accessible information, but it also speaks to the lack of care in what is impacting you here on campus. And so, I ask you fellow students to please continue paying attention as you are currently, and please come to room 206 and work with your student body to make sure that the same time next year, this isn't happening again.
Wilgan, next three minutes. Thank you very much for your testimony. Drew Viles, followed by Jim Salt.
Thank you, Chair Prior. What's in my mind is a couple quotations. One is from our Commander-in-Chief, President Trump. Never give up is what he had to advise the Coast Guard Academy today. I heard that on the news. I also heard on the news recently the words of Amy Goodman. The opposite of poverty is not wealth. The opposite of poverty is justice. And I want to talk a little about justice. People have talked about it already. Chair Prior has talked about the concept of justice, and she links it to tuition. And is that a justice issue? Yes. Other people have talked about justice. We are committed to justice at this community college, and I am grateful for the majority of work that is done in fair and just means. And I wanted to talk a little about the process as it has existed and how it hasn't been fair. And it hasn't been fair for one program, and that's the Native American Program, the Native American Student Program Advisor. I've just heard today, I haven't seen it in writing, but I've heard it addressed specifically for the first time during this budgetary process. And if I got it straight, there's been money added back into the budget in order to make it possible for that position to be reinstated. I'm calling foul. The foul is, I haven't been given notice, the NASA student group hasn't been given notice through this budgetary process that that position was ever taken away. It could have been notified. I could have been notified at the very first. There is a number of positions that were scheduled to be eliminated. That wasn't one of them. There is a number of positions that were scheduled to be left open. That wasn't one of them. It was just left in limbo under multicultural center. I sought with due diligence details of that proposal, and until tonight, I haven't been able to gather precise information. And the precise information, again, is verbal. So, I'm calling foul for that. I'm also calling foul for respiratory care. That program has been treated unfairly during this process, and the unfairness was inadvertent. Revenue figures were in error, and they had to correct the figures. They had to say, no, the revenue for our program is much higher than these. And now, they're wondering, if the revenue figures hadn't been miscalculated, would they have been scheduled for a cut? What do you do when there's a question of justice in the process? It's good to say, I'm sorry, we made a mistake. Justice demands more. Fairness demands more.
Thank you. That's three minutes. Thank you very much for your testimony. Jim, followed by Jay Frazier.
Thank you, Jim Salt, President of the Faculty Association. Six things. One, I do apologize for speaking out from the audience earlier. As a Chair of Committees, I call on people when they do that as well, as some people here know. The, it is, however, frustrating as a maker of a proposal to have a question asked, and the only way to be able to respond to it is to speak out of turn, because we aren't given a turn. And so, while I do apologize, I also ask that the process be modified to allow, when board members and budget committee members have questions, to allow the makers of those proposals to answer them as well, not simply the administration, which is opposing those proposals. Create a fair process so that everybody can benefit from clear understandings of the issues. Secondly, the Budget Development Subcommittee, eleven members, we met nineteen times this year. We met twelve times before the April twelfth meeting with the proposal, the administration proposal was made. I don't understand how any budget committee members could criticize the budget process for getting started after the process started. Twelve of the meetings were before that meeting, seven were after. We did work hard to develop proposals. The issue was not the lack of meeting or meeting early. The issue was that the administration chose to work interlaterally. Despite our questions, requests in the meetings as we were leading up to this, as to how our work was going to was going to actually impact the budget process, we were assured that it would, and it didn't. That was an administration choice. They chose to work interlaterally, and they resisted any changes at all in the process afterwards. Thirdly, I want to clarify Jeffrey's point. Jeffrey has contractual rights to be transferred to other work that he's qualified for. As such, there will be no savings for the philosophy position being cut. And so, the only thing that's happening is you're turning him into doing other work, and three part-time faculty members for not being able to do their work, and students losing the philosophy and religion courses, you're not saving any money. I strongly urge you to table that proposal. I do urge the board to do a line-by-line proposal on the program cuts, the five program cuts that are on this this year, ECE, I guess you don't need to, but the others, so that you don't just rubber stamp this whole set of proposals. Finally, this has been incredibly frustrating process, despite the efforts of the association, the classified, the students and others, to have a collaborative process, to work with the administration, the board, the budget committee. We did not get partners in that process. That is what's responsible for the lack of a consensus budget, and everybody in those rooms and the witnesses to that room know that. And I invite board members to come to these meetings and to observe them, and to hold the administration accountable for working consistently with the integrity of the governance system as designed.
Thank you, Jim. Jay Frazier, followed by Adrian Mitchell.
Jay Frazier, faculty member, Ravel Rouser. So, I have four grandsons. Three of them are old enough to have favorite movies. One of them likes Moana, one of them likes Cars, and one of them likes Despicable Me. He really likes the Minions, by the way. He has a Minions t-shirt, he has a Minions backpack, he was a Minion for Halloween last year. After that movie came out, I saw it dozens of times as a grandpa, and I started calling a part of myself cynical me, kind of humorously or semi-humorously. Let me tell you about cynical me. Cynical me believes I am doing nothing right now, that I am accomplishing nothing, that I'm wasting my time. Cynical me believes that all of you have already made up your minds, that any of our entreaties are hitting deaf ears and closed minds. Cynical me believes that you all have already made the decision, that's just a foregone conclusion, that you're willing to cut programs and positions and hurt people in our college as a whole indirectly, and it doesn't matter, that you don't really care. That's cynical me talking. It may not be the truth, but that's cynical me talking. Cynical me saw an email earlier showing that with respiratory care, if their differential fees were raised to where they should be, the program would be in the black. I looked at that and I thought, well, that's a no-brainer. Surely, anyone would go for that. And yet, I found out that fell on deaf ears. Cynical me thinks that no matter what we do, you've already made your decision. I will admit that I, not just cynical me, I believe that cynical me is right. That's where I'm at. I've been here for twenty years, and cynical me has taken over most of me, unfortunately. There is a little small, little sliver of me that I call unrealistic optimistic me. And that me would like to believe that there's a chance, just a slight chance, that all of you will prove cynical me wrong. Will you? We'll find out soon enough.
Thank you for your testimony. Adrian, followed by Dan Pinkler.
I'll briefly continue the comments I was making earlier. As I mentioned, of the ten contracted faculty members who were slated to lose their positions, their positions will be cut, at most, two of them will actually lose their jobs. We're just moving the expenses around. We're not actually cutting expenses. Moving the contracted faculty and reducing opportunities for students is only going to negatively impact revenue. The programs where they're moving are going to become more expensive. They're only going to be displacing a whole bunch of part-time faculty members. The reason that, besides advocating for jobs, obviously, that's the legal duty and responsibility of the association, but the reason that we're continuing to come back time after time to advocate for these programs, the association, the faculty, the classified, the students who came up with the majority proposal and worked very hard to do so, is because we care deeply about the mission of the college. We remain steadfast in our belief that cutting these programs will only exacerbate the budget deficit. It's going to further the downward spiral of enrollment, and it's going to worsen the fiscal health of this college. That puts the entire college at jeopardy. We do need to address expenses. There are all kinds of ways to address expenses. If we just left half of the vacant positions that are open, open and didn't fill half of the vacant positions, we would probably have double the amount of savings projected from cutting these programs. I want to point to one of the items that's in the majority proposal. It's listed as only twenty-five thousand dollars. That could literally be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the collaborative part-time faculty assignment agreement. The association went to the administration yesterday with a proposal that would be hiring new part-time faculty and allow existing part-time faculty to teach additional classes. Each part-time faculty member is eligible for between eight and thirteen thousand dollars in insurance benefits annually. If we just were to do that, and we don't hire twenty new part-time faculty, that would save about two-hundred thousand dollars. All kinds of ways that we can save money, but we need to, we can't do that alone. We can't make a collective bargaining agreement with ourselves, but we look forward to negotiating with the administration in good faith if it's possible that they actually come to the table and actually agree to meet with us. Please take some time to read the email I sent about respiratory care. That program has been treated unjustly, as Drew stated. It would be very easy to move that program into a fiscally sustainable process by restoring the differential fees. The students are in support of this. There are twenty applicants who've spent a year taking the prerequisites, the rigorous prerequisites. They're ready to begin the program. Why are we turning them away? Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Hello, Gary.
Who was that? Gary, you're on. Hi, Gary. Wow. He's calling.
Sort of, yes, I'm sort of, well, I'm sort of a student.
Calling from Croatia.
Dan?
Albania.
Albania.
Followed by Kathleen Lloyd. Welcome, Dan.
Alrighty. Today, I'll be addressing the GIS program, as I have a couple times before. Just kind of do some greatest hits again. So, there's no GIS industry association, so there's no real advocate, aside from me, I guess, for the GIS program here at LCC, well, me and my instructor. And so, we don't have a large corporate entity telling you how great GIS is. But I can tell you that yesterday, I went to a GIS users' meeting and was offered a job, simply by virtue of being up there in a classroom every Thursday and Tuesday, just within about five sentences. And so, GIS is in demand. I just want to make that very clear. And axing the GIS program, or even putting a big red warning in the catalog saying that the program won't be around next year, so maybe don't sign up, is probably not going to give you an objective and, you know, data-based evaluation about whether or not that program's in demand, if you just put a big, bold warning on it that says, don't sign up for the class. But yesterday, I was offered an internship apropos of simply being here. Again, it's between twenty-nine and thirty-five percent growth, according to Department of Labor. The Bureau of Labor Statistics has one of the top twenty fastest-growing occupations. The demand exists. Locally, they're having a hard time getting aerial imagery. It took them an entire year to execute a contract that I had to execute in a week up there. So, the demand exists. There's not enough firms doing it. The jobs are going to be there. I will need to hire LCC techs. I prefer to hire LCC techs over U of O techs, just because two years is a lot less commitment than four years. And I would like to see some folks who can only afford a two-year degree to work for me in a capacity where they're dealing with STEM, dealing with, you know, highly technical subjects, and performing services for municipalities, governments, and such, that will ultimately save them money. So, in conclusion, please keep the GIS program. Please don't put a big warning on the program's catalog that says, you know, don't take these classes because we're going to get rid of them. Just put it in the catalog. If they don't want them, they won't take them. Done. But don't put a bold warning over them that says you shouldn't take the class. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I'd like to take a few moments of silence to stand in solidarity with the programs and the professionals who are being cut. And I'd also like to talk about my reflections on witnessing this process. I'm in early childhood education, and as I work with students who want to work with young children, we talk about presence, deep listening, making eye contact, respect. And I have deep respect for each and every one of you. I hope you've known that. I've walked up after meetings to shake your hands. However, this process has been so wounding. We were notified two hours before a board meeting that our program's being cut. The disrespect, and then the emergency meetings and the chaos. I've worked in the private sector most of my life, and now I know why. It's like, so, oh, you feel great that you've saved our program? You've got deep healing work to do with us. Because, no, you haven't saved our program. You're cutting half of it, and we're going to be strangled. So, how we're going to manage? I don't know. I just wept watching this. I thought I was coming to a discussion. Alls I saw was power and privilege. Questions were asked, people were not allowed to respond. It was like, you're kidding me. People were given five minutes, the rush, the rush. We've adopted a Reggio-inspired philosophy, but my background really is Montessori. And where we work with time slowing down, because young children are rushed in this crazy culture. That's what I witnessed here. How can you think deeply? There was no discussion. Everybody had made their minds up. I picked up my mother's ashes today. They're in the car with me. I took a little break. I sat at her bedside. I took family leave for a few days. I watched hospice have deep listening. I sat with her, deep listening in silence. She comes from a Quaker background, and she worked with young children in the Watts area trying to create the Head Start Movement for the War on Poverty. But listening, my goodness. Gandhi said, everybody has fifty percent of the truth. I watched Admin come here and bully people. Your minds were made up, and I'm not quitting yet, but I used to love working here. And now, I'm like, you are kidding me.
Members of the board, we're moving on to discussion action items, and we have before us the recommended budget from the Budget Committee. Right. I get that. What's unclear to me is, do you have?
So, Brian, do you just want to refer the board to the piece that you went over in the Budget Committee that is the basis of the recommendation on program and service reductions?
Yeah. It's, you got it. So, what we're looking at is the summary of recommended program and service reductions is on the top of page two in the package you were handed out during the Budget Committee session.
This, right?
Correct. What Melanie is holding up is.
Yeah, that. Okay. So, does a member of the board wish to make a motion?
I have a quick point of clarification. There's been a little conversation about taking these line item, and I'm okay doing that in the event that anybody has any proposed changes from there, but I don't know that there are any sitting around the table. So, in lieu of that, I would move to accept the recommended program cuts and reductions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Gary, are you still with us?
Phil is getting on, but...
So, you need to call Phil? Get him on the line?
Gary, there may be a delay to when we ask.
Okay. Is there?
I'll go ahead and speak to my motion. I think we've considered these items at length. We are down to maybe four or five where there's discrepancy. But I don't know that there are any, anybody on this board that has any proposals to, that transplant some of these figures and the rates that we've, the Budget Committee forwarded us today. This isn't an easy process. It hasn't been. It's probably the most stress that I've seen this college at every level in fourteen, fifteen years here at Lang Community College. I'm afraid that we've allowed the process to get back-ended, that by the time we have a proposal before us in April, mid-April, that collaboration that we strive for should have been addressed. Again, I'll refer to some of these savings and/or revenue proposals, and refer back to a ten-million-dollar shortfall that we had in December, and then a negotiation process. We've been told two or three times tonight that, well, it would have to be negotiated. Faculty, where were you when we were in negotiations? Why weren't you proposing this? There's ten million dollars, you know, you knew there were ten million dollars in shortfalls. I would like to explore these ideas more. There's been a proposal at looking at billing insurance in areas. Let's flesh that out. Let's move forward. Let's build revenues in places that we could be strategic and not have to face this. But the simple fact of the matter is, is that we have to come up with a budget tonight. We have to present a budget, a balanced budget to the state. We have to go to print on our catalog, and I'm not willing to put eight-hundred thousand dollars on the line because we didn't make a decision tonight.
Other board members have comments?
I would just echo what... I agree with what Tony just said. I think there are some things in the majority proposal that I would like to dig into more in the future, such as the 750 fee to potentially, you know, re-up counseling in the future. But I completely understand where we are this evening. So, as we talked about in the Budget Committee, I think kind of using these as starting points for discussion going forward for next year is really important. But I do fully understand where we are this evening.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Are you prepared to vote?
When I...
Yes, ma'am.
When I hear students testify that they're looking for honors programs at PCC, or students testify that they will have troubles moving on to a four-year because of our proposed elimination of a particular program, it gives me pause. Well, I have questions still about what exactly a restructuring of the Multicultural Center Women's Program Office of Gender Equity reorg is. It's a potential... It's potentially disruptive for some of our most vulnerable students on campus. I have never taken a philosophy class at Lane and look forward to someday. I'm saddened that what looks to be one of our most talented instructors is facing the chopping block. Respiratory therapy, I'm an asthmatic and have a tough time coming to grips with the restructuring, or the elimination, rather, of a program that does provide living wage jobs in our community. I understand that there are enrollment issues, and I think we have a real serious marketing issue at this juncture. We look at counseling, and I can't help but think of friends of mine whom I've performed with on this campus, who are no longer on this plane of reality and could have benefited from counseling, and have taken their own lives sadly. And how many lives have been saved by the great work of our counselors on this campus. And I may be the only board member without children on this board, but I empathize deeply with digging into cuts to the Early Childhood Education Program, a program where it has been reported to us that the jobs are so below a living wage that it justifies the cut. And I think that's a fundamental problem that we, as a society, face beyond this board, that certainly our educators and our educators of our youngest minds need to certainly be paid a whole heck of a lot more. And finally, the GIS program, it's difficult for me to hear testimony from former instructors and to recognize the opportunity in the community for folks to not only earn a living wage, but do the jobs that... Do the jobs better than robots can. And it saddens me deeply to dig into any program on this campus. I was reminded that I said once that I stood for all... Or I was fighting as a candidate years ago when I ran for the board this first time for all vital programs at Lane Community College. And I was asked to define what programs are vital. And I said pretty bluntly that all programs are vital. I will be voting in the... I don't know how this motion will be framed, but I'll be voting in the affirmative to keep these programs, rather than see them go by the way of the dodo for two reasons. Or one reason, two words: social cost.
Tony?
Matt, do you have a $1.3 million proposal that would fill the gap in the fiduciary responsibility that we have to present a budget, a balanced budget?
So, coupled with some of the work that's been presented in the Budget Finance Subcommittee that I do think we have a responsibility to look at deeper, coupled with that, and mirroring what would be student activities fees or parking fees, you know, that certainly aren't going to generate, you know, the money you're talking about. But there are levers that we can look at and should be looking at creatively. So, short answer, no. Long answer, I'm willing to let those on this campus who have done the work to continue to do the work and to foster more creative work.
At some point, our work has to be done. And we can't... We have to make a decision. We're the, you know, we're the elected leaders of this school. And we're three days away from a deadline that could cost us $800,000.
Or more.
Or more. Yeah. And so, I just... It's easy. I'm not in support of program cuts. They suck. But I know I have to present a balanced budget. And I know I have a set of numbers from an administration who has proven time and time again to provide exemplary data. So, we have the data that we account for. And we have data that we've been told doesn't include everything here, that has been refuted. And in fact, we've had similar charts like this year after year. The elephant in the room is that every year I've been on the board, I've been told it's $400,000 difference. It's a $3 million difference. If I had spent the hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars that I see on these sheets every year, we would be $25 million in the hole right now. And so, we have to face it. This is the elephant in the room right now. We've continued to say, "Oh, well, there's two sets of crystal balls." No, there's a set of data that we have proven for more than a decade to be within a half a percent of accuracy. And then there's 11 light items that, for a decade, have been off of those numbers to the millions of dollars. And we know which ones have proven themselves. It's been a process of obfuscation. It's been a process of abusing a system we have in place. And frankly, we've allowed it to go on. I'll take my responsibility in it. I'll take... I'll, you know, admit that there may be a need for a program priority list to come from the administration in December. So, you'll have where the administration stands on what priorities are. You'll have what our projections are. And these great ideas can start to come through the process. But this process is not designed to, on April 14th, have random numbers thrown at us that we can't even look at and add a number, add it up correctly. It does not behoove the process to go in this fashion, so.
Madam Chair, can I... I'd like to say something.
Sure, Phil. Go ahead.
So, Matt, I do want to address this as well. The fact of the matter is, you do not have an option right now. And it is reprehensible. It's inexcusable for these things to be said as if we don't care about these programs, or we don't... And like, we want these cuts. Nobody on our board wants to see these cuts. Okay? One. And two, the testimony is heartfelt, not only for you, Matt, and Katie, but also for all of us on the board, I'm pretty sure. So, I ask that if you're going to say that there might be a solution, I think by now, you should have done the work to come up with that solution. A lot of people have been trying really hard to come up with that solution. You do not have that solution right now. We are elected to lead this college, and right now, this is seeming to be the best decision to make. Okay? And we are out of time. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Phil. Suzy?
Phil, thank you so much for what you said. Tony, thank you very much for what you said. I've said it again and again through this process, how difficult it is and where these program cuts have either affected me or as a board member, where I played into these classes when I was a student, where my children, my adult children, when they were here, classes that they took that really made a difference in their lives. I'm not going to say it again. It's tough. That's all.
Thanks, Suzy. Gary, just checking. Are you on the line, Gary? No. Okay.
Madam Chair, I was... There were comments directed solely at me, so if I may, meaning no disrespect to my colleagues, please don't misinterpret my passion for programs at this institution as an affront to the service that you all pour into this community and this college. Quite the contrary. I understand that we are all here as volunteers, the seven of us, five sitting around this table, and the two board members on our phone. I'm not pretending to be on some moral high-ground hill. I simply am being a voice for those who not only feel like they are voiceless, but a voice for any and all programs who have helped change and transform the lives of a great many of Lane County residents, myself included. And the overarching goal, I would hope, would be retention and recruitment, obviously in no particular order. Recruitment and retention of our students at a time when we're so woefully low in enrollment and have to rely so significantly on funds from the state based on our enrollment. There are other answers, and I don't pretend to have them all, nor should each one of us have those answers. But if we listen, we can pick up on things like pressing pause on vacancies to save money, or offering early incentive programs to not just one cohort, but to classified faculty and managers in a more equitable fashion. There are ways to do this. And I understand I am in the minority, as I was on the Budget Committee, but my vote in regards to these programs is not an affront or an insult to your service, my colleagues. My vote in regards to saving these programs is consistent with every vote I've taken in regards to program cuts and every vote I've taken in regards to a budget that has been presented as either a consensus budget or not. I shall be in the minority, I predict, once again.
Take an opportunity to speak, Matt.
Is Gary on the line again for a moment, anyway?
Gary, the motion before us is to accept recommendations for program cuts as presented by administration. And I'm going to have us vote soon because I worry we'll lose you once again. I would just like to say that I support the motion. I'm going to have more to say about that at the close of the meeting. But while we have you on the line, I'd like to suggest to the board that we conduct our vote. Are you ready to vote, board members? All those in favor of accepting the program cuts as recommended on this piece of paper in front of us, as presented this evening, signify by saying aye or raise your hand. Gary?
Aye.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Opposed? By the same sign?
Yeah.
The motion carries six to one. We're going to move on to the proposed tuition rate increase. We have a recommendation from administration that is memorialized on the memo that you have in front of you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Suzy, do I have a second?
I'll second, and I do have a question.
Okay. Is there discussion?
So, the, you know, the original proposal was based on 556 from the state. We have a little evidence that it's going to move, which would directly reduce this rate, you know, based on a percentage up till 634. How, if at all, are we identifying that in, like, our course catalog and stuff? Are we... Are there any thoughts on how we'll present that? Are we just going to present the maximum rate?
Can I clarify what you're asking? You're asking that as early as three days from now, we write down words that would send a signal to prospective Lane students that if something happens, we might lower their tuition?
I'm just... Well, that's what our acceptance of this budget does.
How realistic is it for us to actually write that down?
I've just asked if that's been thought of.
Be a nice surprise later.
So, what we have told the heck is if we get the number that we've asked for, 634, the first thing we would do is lower tuition.
Absolutely. And that's what they... My point is simply, is there any... Has there been any thought as how that will be presented? Are we simply just going to put 10750 or whatever it is? And then if it's 10250 or wherever, then we'll just go with that?
I think we have to advertise the actual cost, which is 10950. And if the state comes up with more money, then there would be another decision by the board to lower that tuition if that was what you wanted to do.
Certainly, you could be the one to make sure we address it.
Well, no. I mean, it was just presented at the onset of this budget that that was kind of...
Then I'll be the one to make sure we address it.
So, I'm just making sure that that's identified, so.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Would it be prudent to weave that into an amendment for the board? I mean, Mike will be joining us. In two months, we'll have a new chief executive, a new president. I think it would be, and I would be supportive of that, based on what the Community College Support Fund looks like and how we could actually move the needle the opposite direction in regards to tuition. If so, I mean, I'm kind of gauging the temperature, maybe in a little unappropriately, but...
I have no interest in taking action on some fantasy.
I'm starting to lose it, so I am voting in favor of that motion to reduce tuition.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. We'll hold that in abeyance for 60 seconds while we process this question.
Matt, I mean, I think we could. But I also think that, like I said, from the onset of this proposal, that's been the conversation. We're only two months away from final word from the state. So, I mean, I'm comfortable that we don't have to. We know that that's the direction that this budget is taking us, that if we get above 556, that is intended directly to buy down tuition rates.
Yeah.
Melanie, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm actually... I'm unclear about that. So, is that definitely in here, or is... Do we need to articulate that? So, I do think we should articulate that. I think even just saying if there is, you know, more money that's provided by the state, that the board is directing the administration to...
I think we'd have to take action to change tuition. I don't think the administration could just unilaterally do anything.
Well...
Can you?
I don't know. I mean, you could add to the motion, if you wanted to, that approval of the tuition rate with kind of the addition that should more resources be made available from the state, you direct the administration to come back with a new tuition proposal.
Melanie, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah. I mean, I will just say, add really quick before I do that. I mean, so, that's what we did at U of... We did a little different in that we laid out the exact amount that the state would have to provide, and then what that would result in for the specific tuition decrease. But we did have the board approve it in advance, so it was understood.
So, you're making that motion?
Yes.
So, is that an amendment?
There would be an amendment.
And is there a second?
I don't know if I can accept an amendment to my own motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah. And then I'll just vote yes.
But I would like... I'd like to know exactly what I'm seconding. Wait, 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 please.
I mean, so this budget...
I would like to hear the amendment for the minutes, please.
This budget assumes 556 million in state support fund. So, essentially, all we're saying is if the state comes up with more than 556, that the administration will return with a plan on reducing tuition.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah.
So...
And that's been seconded by Matt.
Well, the motion... I didn't second the motion. I seconded the amendment.
That's what I said.
Okay.
So, the amendment.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. So, the motion is amended.
Did we hear from Gary and Phil? Did you vote on that amendment?
I was aye as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Gary was? Gary is too? Okay.
Yes.
Gary is too? Okay. Okay, thanks, Gary. You voted once already, but I'm going to let you vote again. All those in favor of the motion to increase tuition as described and as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Gary. We have one more motion, Phil and Gary, try to hang on.
Did you oppose, Susie? Was that?
No.
I've misinterpreted.
Is this fee just the tech fee?
The fees are the health clinic fee, the online course fee and the technology fee.
I've shared mine with everybody. I keep on.
Here is a third recommendation before the members of the board to increase student fees as follows. For $45 per term for the health clinic fee, to $25 for an online course fee and to $9 per credit for a technology fee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Tony and then Susie. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, I was going to offer discussion. To circle way back to one of your questions earlier, Tony, I just want to reiterate that this was one of those categories that I thought we could have looked at a little more carefully and weighed, you know, what it costs to run the health center on campus and, you know, what is fair in the market, what is fair across the street at the UO, what the students are paying there and what they're paying here. And it sounds like something, yeah, they pay significantly more and, you know, I just see those, this category as a way to invest across the board in a more egalitarian fashion to help stabilize some of our programs and our budget woes. So I will be in favor, but I think that in the future, this is a category that we could look at a little more carefully.
Further board discussion?
Oh, I have a, I have a quick question, Ronny, sorry.
Yes.
I just want to clarify though, Matt, did you say this early on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He did.
You said it early on? Okay.
Several meetings ago, Phil.
Yeah. Further board discussion? All those in favor of increasing student fees as recommended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Phil, were you an aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
Gary, you're an aye?
Yes.
Yeah, they're both, they're both aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I am going to give board members the opportunity to make any closing comments you may choose to make and we'll start with you, Tony.
Oh, can we start with Croatia?
Oh, that's a very good idea.
Albania, sorry.
Gary, any closing comments?
Not for me, thanks. You're saying that again, I'm leaving.
Thank you, Gary, for your participation from so far away. Phil?
Well, I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in this and I do really, I mean, our following board meetings, we need to start talking about how these discussions happen early on. And it's sad enough that we keep, you know, one group points to another, the other one to the other, that nobody's playing nice. We need to get this job done and we need to get it done well before we have consensus issues and everybody's under the gun to make a decision. I personally am committed for this to happen. I don't want just creative ideas with the three minute, you know, or three day, in a three day period to try to resolve something. We have a whole year. We have a whole year. We have a whole year. So let's do our job, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Tony?
I'm spoken out.
You're done.
Yeah.
Melanie?
I mean, I don't really have a lot to add at this point. I just, I think, I appreciate everybody who has been thoughtful about this process and tried to participate in the productive conversations that we've had. I agree, you know, getting more clarity, I think, on the front end of what the process is and then against making sure that we are considering some of these majority proposals going forward.
Thanks, Melanie. Susie?
No, I'll say.
Okay. Matt?
I think we heard from a record number of community members throughout this process and I want to thank everyone who stepped up and shared their story. Nothing I say, I was going to say could trump that, but I'm going to say could supersede that. Nothing I can say can supersede that. So, thank you. I know it was tough. My heart goes out and I want to thank my colleagues. We'll move forward together boldly. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I would have liked very much to vote against that tuition increase. I absolutely, on a fundamental level, do not support the continuing upward march of tuition and I am convinced it has every bit as much impact on our enrollment as this ephemeral projection around the impact of program cuts and unemployment and no one's going to persuade me any differently. But I would like to take responsibility for the fact that I, I do think on some level and over perhaps an extended period of time, this Board of Education has failed to engage in expectation management. There is exactly one body and one body only that is authorized to set policy direction for this institution and it's the group of people sitting before you this evening. We were elected to do it and people voted that we do it and that is the charge that we have. And when six months ago, this policy body provided very specific direction to its one employee, that is the president of this college, about how to approach budget development this year, we are the only group enfranchised to provide that kind of policy direction, whether you like it or not. That is how this system currently works. There is some sensibility in environments of higher academics that consensus is the holy grail of life. And when we provide direction to administration and then they are assailed for not changing that direction in order to achieve this holy grail of consensus, each of you needs to hold the board accountable, not the president, not the executive team, but the board. And if you don't like that direction, you should be criticizing us and not your colleagues because your administration is us. Every policy direction that this board gives must be interpreted by the president and the managers and the executive team of this college. And if you don't like the direction, you really should be telling the board. Now, we made an effort to be as welcoming and as flexible in this process as an elected Board of Education could possibly be. We sat and listened to five hours worth of public testimony, one night and another two, three hours the next night, and we've listened to testimony every time we've met. To characterize us as coming from a place of privilege or unwillingness to listen or be responsive is unfair and it's insulting and it's just more blamesmanship. This college can no longer be supported by its resource base. There isn't enough money to pay the bills and last year, at my request, we dipped into savings in order to balance the budget. I'm responsible for that, me personally. I persuaded my colleagues. I tried to persuade my colleagues, don't raise tuition. Almost managed to get her done until the board said, no, we just can't do without that revenue source. So here we are, back at it again, this time $7 plus fees on students. I'm offended by that. I am fundamentally offended by a group of people who are so focused on one aspect of balancing this budget with no consideration for the impact that these changes will have on other constituent groups as well. Where are, where's your defense of students? Where's your commitment to that mission? So forgive my passion, as Matt might like to say, but this has been a tough budget process for everyone involved, not just for faculty, certainly hard for faculty, but I think you have maligned in many respects, your president, your executive team, a group of people that have put in thousands of hours to put together the numbers that we work with, and they do have a good track record and there is a reason why members of this policy body tend to trust their recommendations. That's really all I wanted to say. My turn to speak my piece, so we're adjourned.
You're right, Phil. You're right, Gary. Thank you.